Earth to Chris.
Can you hear us?
I can now.
Hey. Yeah, at Concom, I said that you went to San Antonio for cooler weather.
Okay. It being 6:30 on October 23rd, we will call to order the work session of the Chelmsford Planning Board. These meetings are televised and recorded and will be available on demand. And if the electronics should go down, then we'll do our best to bring it back. And alternatively, we will continue the meeting. So the first we want to do is review the B A O D overlay. I don't know if everyone had a chance to review.
Hey.
Hey.
The old, the prior presentations from town meeting and the Economic Development Council. And also, I think the last one is from a consultant. For the record, Chris is here on Zoom, Chris LaValley. And the other six of us are here in the room. Anyway, so I think the first thing that I would like to do is kind of have people weigh in on if they have a chance to review these documents from the, from the original presentation of the overlay. If they agree with, or if we agree with what the objectives were of the overlay still going forward. And if we agree with the objectives, but we think that there may be some way to enhance it. I'm not sure that we're necessarily, single-handedly, the ones to do that. Maybe we should invoke the help of others. But if we wanted to accomplish some slightly different things, what would they be? Than what has been accomplished and what the goals were.
My thought is, I think the, the purpose for the B A O D was a good one. And I think what it needs more than anything is not major rework, but a look at the things we were trying to accomplish, given what, you know, what three or four years of, of experience have given us. I mean, when we first did it, we talked a great deal about business amenities. That was what was going to fill the park up. And yeah, we had other things in there, too. We had the, some, some housing and then other stuff and drive-throughs. But the biggie seemed, big part of the discussion seemed to be the business amenities. Now, I'm not sure in retrospect that that was the biggest piece. Maybe we should have put more time in some of the other pieces, like, you know, detailing out some of the housing stuff. I don't know. But I think the basics are solid. I think it's just, I think what we need is tweaks.
Other people have other thoughts?
I mean, when it, when it was voted in, I mean, I was not a sitting member of the planning board at the time. My understanding, it was to try to attract banks, a dry cleaner, restaurants.
Yeah.
I mean, so far, it's, I mean, we have the success, one success with Prest. But is, I guess my question would be for Evan. Is Evan, is there anything when you meet with property owners that you think is discouraging? Any more restaurants or like a bank going down? I mean, D C U has a corporate office, but I don't believe there's a retail banking.
It's difficult to answer that question.
Yeah.
There's not as much proactive or natural engagement as there used to be. Maybe there's property owners that aren't aware of the overlay. On the other hand, I, I don't get, I don't get calls inquiring about those types of uses. So it could be a disconnect. It could be as simple as the property owners aren't, aren't willing or interested to make the necessary capital improvements to accommodate those types of uses. Prest, Prest took years in order to, to get there.
Yeah.
And Prest wanted to be there.
Right.
So, you know, the notion, the notion of a bank or a, you know, a personal service like a laundromat or a salon, I, I just don't have the answers. I don't.
Retail is missing from this, right?
Retail, retail is allowed under the overlay.
It's allowed.
It is allowed, yeah. So the, you know, the, the notion was, well, you know, could a convenience store, would a convenience store go in there? You have to, you have to kind of remember the context. It was pre-COVID. And since COVID, the, the way the office park works is completely different. That's why people think the buildings are vacant, because the parking lots are vacant. Most of the buildings have viable businesses in them. They're just using, using the square footage entirely different.
So.
I think the, if you look into the overlay and the details of, in the PowerPoint, I think a lot of the vision and what we're trying to attract is spot on. I think the problem is, is that it's all optional. Businesses can come in under that overlay or under the underlying zoning. And if we've got a warehouse coming in there under the underlying zoning, that's counterproductive to what we're trying to do in the overlay. So to me, because this overlay is completely optional and people can, businesses can come in under the underlying zoning, there's no incentive for them to, to add on the additional amenities and more expensive things, like outdoor, outdoor walkways and things like that. There's absolutely no incentive for them to do it. So of course, they're going to go under the cheaper alternative of just building a box warehouse. And that's what we're seeing. Those are the project coming before us on 129. We're, we're not seeing the high-value businesses. We're seeing the lower-value businesses going in there. And we are essentially approving them.
We are what?
We're approving those projects. We're approving the, we approved the, the 270. We approve, we're, we've said that the, the lower-valued business of the, the trades offices are going in there and they're applicable under the, the overlay.
Oh, I think that's completely different than a, than a warehouse. I think that's a redevelopment and a high-value project that brings vitality and amenities and potentially jobs.
It's not a high-value project. Those jobs are already existing. There, we had to push for an external amenity. Most of the amenities are internal to that building. And if you look at the businesses that we're trying to attract with this overlay, advanced manufacturing, I T, professional and technical services, life science, biotech and pharma. Trades is actually not one of the high-value businesses that we're trying to attract. Yes, it's important that we need them, but that's not what we're trying to attract in this overlay. And so because there are no incentives, because it's just an overlay and people can still go with the cheaper options, that's what they're going to do. And those are the projects that we're seeing.
Well, I mean, essentially, what you're saying is change the underlying zoning. Doesn't really have much to do with the overlay. The way an overlay functions is by being optional.
Giving flexibility.
Because it lets us, it lets us, if you will, make deals and arrangements that otherwise we could not, perhaps even could not legally make.
Right, but if we don't see the projects to begin with, we can't make any deals.
Yeah, people don't come, and the, the only way I could think of to guarantee that you not get the ones that you don't want is to eliminate them from the underlying zoning. And I'm not sure, first of all, with most of the property that's in there, having something on it already, you'd be in a real morass of grandfatheredness.
It will require that the amenity come with it. Like, there has to be some, like, again, like, the fact that this, the trade thing.
Yeah, but that stops being an overlay.
I get that, but like, you know, like, whether I vote in favor of that, I will see, depending on the project, to be quite honest. And, you know, I don't want to go down that specific one. But like, again, with the intent of what we want this to be, the gateway, we want it to look like Linfield Marketplace or something like that, that has a mix.
What is that, like a mall? I mean, I looked at pictures of it, because you keep talking about that.
Oh, it's, it's beautiful. It has office buildings, it has restaurants, it has.
Is it like the one in Burlington where Wegmans is?
No. But it has like, it has doctor's offices, it has, like, it's.
There's residential up there.
Well, I mean.
Residential. But there was, but you can remember that, that was one owner for that entire lot up in Linfield. And in Burlington, all those properties were bought by one owner.
I get it.
So we have multiple owners here.
I get it, and it's one at a time, right? Like.
Yeah, but they had a vision down there in Burlington, had a vision. And the one owner bought the property and then he created what's there.
Right, but that took the planning board 20 years to get the right planning in there. Because if you remember, they were struggling for a while.
They'll rise.
They were really struggling, yep. And they, you know, the planning board fixed that, right? Like, so, again, yes, one order, owner came in and bought stuff, but that was because they fixed.
Both of those projects were market-driven. A private investor came to the town and said, I need a rezoning to make my vision work. I, I wouldn't give Linfield or Burlington credit for making those projects happen. Market brought it to them. And in Chelmsford, we don't have any market demand. There is no, there is no market coming to the planning board saying, I want to build a biotech, I need rezoning. I want to build a, a third half light or a Linfield market light. I need, I need your help. There is no market demand. That's part, that's part of, that's part of the challenge with 129 is the original vision is almost obsolete based upon post-COVID. And then you layer on soil limitations, the town's interest in solving PFAS, market challenges, sentiment about how we, how we approach zoning and development. Those are all challenges to, to the market. And so if you're an investor and you have, you know, $10 million to spend, you're going to look at communities that are, have less challenges and are welcoming and open.
Yeah, I do think, though, the other piece of this, too, that's, I think, the fact that we have the housing in this.
Right, so.
Like, I think we're going to see more housing projects come in as well.
Okay, so maybe we should think about what do we want there? What would, I mean, I, not that it's for us to decide, because, but, I mean, if, if we were going to have a perfect world and we decided what we wanted there, what would that be? And then how can we try and drive that? So like, we talked about during the M B T A zoning, looking at already existing areas where there are structures in place and, and maybe putting, making them mixed use. But here, like, if we could get a developer to come in and to build some mixed use, like the Beehive, in my opinion, with retail, restaurant, whatever kind of services on the ground floor and housing on the second floor with amenities. I mean, to me, it didn't have to be one huge giant lot that one owner owns. I mean, those, that could happen piecemeal, in my opinion, and still be a meaningful improvement in the utility of the space. And, and I feel like if we, I mean, I, I feel like what Evan's saying, and I think it's probably true, that, you know, this board has approved a few development and redevelopment projects, but it's been very painstaking and, and not necessarily welcoming to the, to the developers. And not that we want to be open arms to all developers. But if we could figure out what we want and then try and attract the developers who might do that, as opposed to just making it so odious to get to yes on every single project, that, I don't know.
I think we've already defined what we've, what we want in this overlay. The problem is, is that the projects that are coming before us are not what we want in this overlay.
You're confused, Chris, you're, you're confusing the, the overlay. The overlay is not needed to bring in biotech, life science. Those businesses can come in under, underlying zoning, so the.
But they're not going to come in if we've got a warehouse right next door. That's my point.
The market is speaking very clearly in, in 2024. It was very different in 2016. In 2016, there was no talk within the marketplace of warehouses in Chelmsford. There wasn't even, the economics didn't even work to tear down an office building, period, the end. It's literally taken almost a decade since 2016 for the first office building to propose to be demolished and something new built. So.
But if you look at the current market, companies are requiring workers to come back to the office.
That's not, that's not necessarily in Chelmsford. You can't compare what's happening in Burlington or Waltham or Woburn to Chelmsford. That 10 miles north, up Route 3, is a world of difference, always has been, always has been.
And I'm not saying it's the same, but what I'm also saying is that zoning is not going to attract the, the businesses that we want. Marketing, proactive outreach, additional programs, and I mentioned this in the last, the last meeting, is that the zoning defines what we want, it defines what we doesn't, what we don't want, but it's not the mechanism to attract the businesses.
It's, it's, it's part of it. Once you, the zoning serves a primary purpose within the marketplace, where the market reads your zoning and assumes that what it says is what you want. There's clearly a disconnect.
They're the minimums of what we want.
Well, it sends messages. These are the types of uses, some are by rights, some are by special permit. You have overlays, the overlays are optional, and there's incentives, carrots and sticks. There's clearly a disconnect between what the zoning says and what the, what the planning board or community's desires and wishes are. That needs to be fixed. So similar to your citizen petition, if there are uses or scales of uses that are completely non-starters, the underlying zoning needs, needs to reflect that. That will, that will clarify a lot of the mixed messaging that's going on. Once you're zoning, once your proper zoning is in place, it still doesn't guarantee that the market agrees with it. So you can then create programs, marketing programs, branding programs, and ultimately incentives, TIFs, or other things where the town puts its, you know, money where his mouth is. But you still have to have a, a market demand and a market interest. And that has, that has been and continues to be the challenge for 129 from a market perspective. Some projects are just not economically feasible, or their businesses don't want to be in Chelmsford for various reasons. Then you're left with, then you're left with, once a, once an opportunity comes to the town, what does the town do with that opportunity? And that's a whole other issue related to permitting challenges and messaging challenges and things of that nature. So soup to nuts, the town has disconnects between what it actually says it wants within the zoning and then what it truly wants when it comes to permitting, never mind visions and strategies and things of that nature. But I can tell you that the marketplace is very confused and rightfully so, based upon when you look at what transpired, so from 2016 with the adoption of the overlays, the branding and marketing the town was doing within regional events, the Economic Development Committee, and then you look at what has transpired since 2016, incrementally, all of those things have been dismantled. And yet, and we're still asking the same question we were asking in pre, pre-2016. What do we want to be, what do we want to do?
I think part of the confusion is that we've got underlying zoning at one extreme with warehousing and industrial, and then an overlay on top of it at the other extreme. And of course.
I can explain to you what, why, why that was. There was a strategic, there was a strategic reason why the planning board and myself never went into the underlying zoning use table and changed anything. The reason for that, and again, at the time, warehousing wasn't, wasn't on the radar screen like it was a couple of years ago. We, we knew that 129 was diverse. It always has been diverse. It never had all its eggs in one basket, like a lot of tech parks. And that has served the 129 area really, really well. But it never had heavy, heavy warehousing truck uses. As the market has evolved and Chelmsford has, has faced certain, certain challenges and new challenges, that, that is one market interest. Maybe that's waned, you know, since, since the peak during COVID. But I, but I encourage, you know, the, you and the board and the community where there are non-starters, such as your citizen petition, that didn't eliminate the use, but, but regulated the scope and scale of those uses. If there are other similar uses, such as outdoor contractor yards and things of that nature, that you just don't think are appropriate, then we should go in and change the underlying zoning. But I would caution the town, prior to doing a, a market analysis, such as what was done in, in 2016, before you go in and, and start making significant changes to the underlying use table, you have, you better have a really good understanding as to what the market views you and how, what the role of Chelmsford is within the regional marketplace. Because it very well could, could turn out that the, the vision of biotech, life sciences may never come to fruition, once it's explained to us. And then the marketplace has a very, very clear vision as to how it views 129. None of that has ever been fully researched or vetted. I certainly think I have a good grasp on that. But we may need to bring in, you know, other subject matter experts to hear from, you know, regional commercial brokers, property owners, investors. Like, my concern for the town is creating zoning, because it, it sounds good and feels good, doesn't, doesn't solve the problem either. The nice thing about the current use table is that it, it's open to anything and everything.
Broad.
And many of those uses require a special permit. And if the use doesn't require a special permit, then anything over 20,000 square feet requires a major business complex special permit. So at least we can, we can say confidently, we are not missing any market opportunities. We're not picking winners and losers. But because we have a major business complex special permit, anything over 20,000 is going to have increased scrutiny. That is, that has served the town really, really well. The flip side is, yeah, you'll get projects that are controversial or not deemed to be appropriate location or appropriate scale. And you have to deal with that accordingly. So that, to me, that's what needs to be discussed.
Can I make a recommendation? Because this one here is a really big project, because I think we have to look at the area, the underlying zoning. I agree with Chris.
This is just the beginning of the conversation.
I know, but can I just make a recommendation for this particular one? Because I also think we need to look at the map of what this covers. Because remember, this also goes into Riverneck Road, which doesn't make any sense to be part of this whole thing. Can we take, do this, like, on a separate day? And really, like, kind of spend the time to, like.
This is just the beginning of the conversation, Anita. We're not getting any, any, like, zoning recommendations tonight.
I'm not saying we are, but I just think, like, we're limited with time.
Just a dedicated, yeah.
A dedicated day, like, like evening, that, that's all we're talking about, right? Like, and we kind of just really hash it out, right? Like, from soup to nuts.
I also think we've, there's more, there's other stakeholders that would be appropriate to engage with on these questions. And to Evan's point, I think also, I would like to hear from some of the property owners and some of the industry experts and some of the real estate brokers who have a better finger on the market and would, could give us a bit of guidance and more information.
Our own business development.
Right, that's one, well, we don't have one anymore.
Again, we're just starting, but I think this.
Yeah, I mean, she does make a presentation, she did make a presentation regularly to the select board. I'd love to see those numbers that we looked at and hear from.
She's still with the town?
She's the Human Resources Director now.
Oh, she is, okay. So we don't have a business development?
Right.
I want to, I just want to jump in, because this is way back to the beginning of whatever, when Evan was talking. At the very beginning, Evan said, first of all, I agree with Evan's idea of bringing people in to, as we were just talking about. So I agree with that totally. But what Evan said was that there was a disconnect between this board's sort of outlook or desire, views or whatever, and, and this overlay, at least, that's what I understood you to say. And all I've heard tonight is that the board sounds like they agree with the overlay. So can we first establish, do we agree that the board agrees with the idea of the overlay overall? I, I'm assuming that's what I've heard.
I refer to disconnect in the, the context of Chris's comments that the overlay is designed to permit biotech, life sciences. And my point is, the overlay, you don't need the overlay for those businesses to move into 129. The only reason for the overlay is to permit the amenities. Retail, restaurants, residential.
And to make it more flexible.
Right, right. So to Chris's point, there is some merit to the fact that big picture, vision, strategy, they can be working against one another. On the other hand, if the data suggests that we don't have a strong market demand to begin with, then you, then I, I think you're trying to use both, you know, to, to create improvements. The challenge with the overlay is that most property owners aren't in a position to transition or reposition their properties to those things. As I mentioned, Press Cafe was owned by a REIT, a national REIT, and it took them two years of internal conversations to allow 2,500 square feet to be converted to a non-office user. And if, so then if you look at other property owners down there that are locally owned and operated or regional entities, none of them have proactively called or inquired, even though they know that Prest is down there. So it's all very puzzling to try to figure out what motivates a property owner down there, what, what, what are their returns on investment? It seems like many of them are, are okay with what they have and how it's going. So.
Evan, I don't think it's at all puzzling, because we've got, we've got the industrial underlying zoning. And this is why I agree with the, the, the internal workings of that overlay. But now what we're seeing. But now what we're seeing is the market is driving towards cheap development and rent it out for high rents. And the best way to do that is to put in a warehouse at low cost and rent it out at a high rent. And of course, the developers are not going to put in all these amenities and things like that, because it's more expensive to develop.
Yeah, but Chris, don't you think we've already somewhat addressed that problem with our town meeting?
No.
No.
Do you want to make it smaller?
No, because it's still allowed in that area. Like, so I think we need to figure out, like...
Well, we have size limitations currently. Do you want to make the size limitations smaller?
But that just allows them to put more smaller warehouses. But it's still a box warehouse that includes no amenities.
But we haven't seen that.
You know...
Again, I think this is like, this is, I think we need to dedicate a day, like, all of us, like, I would, like, I think we should maybe go to the next one, because I think that might be a little bit easier for us to, like, focus our time on, and then this one we can maybe do a separate meeting.
I think there's more setup stuff to take here, to say, and, well, I don't know, maybe you're right, maybe a full evening of this would work. But I'm, I have some concerns here that we're trying to pretend that we can control the market. Well, we have a little bit of control of the market over short-term things like five years, but unless we're willing to put a heck of a lot of money on the table, I don't see a lot of billionaires, that the market will sooner or later force its way in. And we should probably adjust ourselves more to letting the market, letting the market make some of the determinations about what really happens over there, and just try to smooth it around the edges. Now, it's a market-driven economy, that's what we live in.
It'd be nice to bring in maybe a professional that's, you know, a large real estate broker in Boston or something, see what is the vision that they see in the next five years.
Yeah, that one, I think it would be highly valid.
Maybe we make some adjustments to this if we want to retract things within the next five years. We don't want to miss the boat.
No, you don't want to miss, or at least this boat, but there'll be another boat afterwards. It's just a decade of underuse.
Another decade of underuse.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, another thing I thought was that there's a lot of mention in these about, you know, connectability and bike trails and walking trails, and so I really think, you know, we brought it up briefly with the Beehive developer under applicability, but I think that we should be thinking in terms of if these properties were to be all developed, like, what would be a decent way to implement some community amenities into the properties that everyone along the line could use? And maybe the town could also get some grant money to help, like, develop green spaces or whatever within those confines of the structures, I don't know. Okay, well, it's seven o'clock, and we didn't get to Kate's Corner, so shall we do Kate's Corner next time? And maybe try and come back to this...
We used to do, like, the work sessions on, like, I remember when I first started, we did work sessions, like, non-televise, we did it, we had more flexibility on nights that we could do a work session?
You mean separate from a meeting?
Yeah, to do, for, like, if we want to address this 129.
We did sometimes do them on the off Wednesday.
Okay.
I mean, I just feel like, I think lately we've been pretty bogged down with major things that have made for long meetings that to add on additional, I mean, I don't know. If people are interested in doing that, I'm perfectly happy to do that. I can't do it the first weekend in November.
I think we have to do more separate meetings, because we can't get anything done in 15 minutes on these...
Well, we could also make it, the other meetings start at 7:30, and so have 6:30 to 7:30.
But then it just makes this meeting really long.
Or six, if you're...
I can't make it here at 5:00, 6:00.
Yeah, I mean, been passed, the board has used dedicated work sessions, or started, or did a 6:30 to 8:00 work session and then did regulatory business.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
I'd be fine with that if we can limit the hearings after that.
Or maybe we could do the first weekend in December?
Yeah, like, the first Wednesday in December, could people do... Or even on, like, a different night, if we can't, like...
I think Wednesdays, because people are kind of have the habit of having the meeting and having it open, I don't know, for me, it works better than other nights, because I have other things other nights.
And then maybe we can bring, like, someone in, or at least...
Yeah, someone that doesn't have interest right now, that has business in front of the town.
Right, yeah.
Or people that you know in your networks, that are just general subject matter experts.
Right.
Yeah, like a, like a true, kind of like, work session versus...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you had penciled in November 20th if needed, and December 18th if needed. I do have one applicant who would like to, a regulatory matter, submit for November 20th if you're going to have that meeting.
Okay.
If you choose to meet on November 20th. Maybe we can dedicate most of that meeting, or all of it, with the exception of that one regulatory item.
Yeah, we could do that.
We couldn't do it, we couldn't do that on the 13th?
It depends on how much you continue this evening, plus Paylet may be back on the 13th.
Yep.
I know, I know that the 20th, we can restrict. We don't have to continue any current business to the 20th and accommodate that one new item.
Are we talking about November 20th?
Yes.
Okay.
Like, I'd rather, honestly, I'd rather just keep it to just the work session.
I can't hear you.
I'd rather just keep it to the work session. I think we would get a lot more done, if we didn't have other things.
So you want to do December 18th as a work session?
Why not November...
If we can, let's see if we can move that regulatory, let's see where we are today. Let's go through the meeting and see where we are, what's going to, see how it works, if we can move that other regulatory up.
Fair, okay. All right, so it being after seven o'clock, apologize for the tardiness, we're going to start with the general planning board meeting. First up is public input. Just as a reminder, these meetings are televised, live, and also recorded and available later on demand by Chelmsford Telemedia. And if the meeting, the meeting is conducted in person and remotely as a courtesy, and should the remote access go down, we would do our best to make it return, but if not, we would continue the live meeting. So next up is public input, which shall be limited to statements from the public relating to issues within the jurisdiction of the planning board, but that are not currently the subject of a pending public hearing before the board. Public comment on any pending public hearings shall only be heard during such public hearings. So is there anyone who wants to speak?
Hi, Durane Dash, Precinct 9. I'm not sure what you just said meant, so I'm going to ask, am I able to speak about the B A O D overlay?
About the B A O D?
B A O D overlay.
Yes.
Yes, okay. The only thing that I want to say is, I mean, you guys keep talking about multifamily housing going in there. We, Chelmsford is at its peak. We're building a new school, a parker school. If you keep talking about putting more housing in, you're going to outdate the school before ground's even broken. You got to start thinking about the future, like, what's going to happen with the schools, with the sewage, with the water, stuff like that. You got to stop thinking about building apartments and bringing more children. I mean, I love kids, don't get me wrong, but we got to start thinking seriously about what our capacity is, what we can do, what we can hold, what we can, you know, what we can accommodate, all right? We've got a new, we're talking about building a new school, okay? We've got, we're getting plans for that new school. Now, we're going to have these plans for this new school, and before ground's even broken, that school's going to be outdated if we keep building. We can't do that. We need to realize it's time to put the stopper on it. I agree with having industry, having the stores, the doctor offices, the, you know, the dent, all of that stuff. That's a great idea to bring that to Chelmsford, because it would, you know, it would build up 129 and make it look nice, and I agree with that. We'll also bring some traffic, which is kind of an ache, but I, I mean, we definitely need to get something done on 129, and I definitely applaud you for all the effort that you're putting in to try to bring businesses in. I know it's hard. Businesses aren't being attracted to Chelmsford for some reason. I have no idea why, because I think Chelmsford's a great town, and if I had money to build a business, I would come to Chelmsford, because I think Chelmsford's a great town, and there's a lot of great people in it. And, you know, I don't understand why we're not attracting businesses. And I know you're trying hard, I know you are, and I know you're doing a great job, but please, think about, when you're talking about multifamily housing and stuff like that, it kind of scares me, it ekes me, because I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to be placed out of Chelmsford. I mean, if we keep doing this and our taxes keep going up and up and up and up, I'm going to have to move, you know, and I don't want to move. I like Chelmsford. Okay, so please, just think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, seeing none, we have first the milars, that's just a signing, correct?
Need a motion to endorse those milars.
Move to endorse the milars?
If they end the meeting, we'll endorse them.
Second?
Aye, second.
Okay, second from Chris, motion by Mike Raisbeck, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous, including Chris on the Zoom. Next up, we have 15 Research Place, a minor site plan review.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Brian Malisi with Haley Ward Incorporated, here requesting the board give us a minor site plan review for 15 Research Place. Here with me today, out in the audience, is Mike Milano, who's the owner's representative, and Christopher Clark, who is the owner of Picard Construction, who will be the contractor on the project. What's up there on the screen is a portion of the site plan that was submitted as part of the submittal package. What we, the minor site plan approval itself includes a small two-dock loading dock retrofit to the existing building at 15 Research Place. It's 25 feet by 30 feet for a total of 750 square feet. It's going on the north, the northerly corner of the building is shown right there. As stated in the narrative, I can read that out loud if you'd like, but we did include a narrative. There's a total of 16 parking spaces that will be affected due to the loading dock and its placement and the ramp down to the loading dock. But we also provided a parking calculation, there's 135 existing spaces on site. Once we remove the 16, that leaves 119 spaces, and it's ample for the, for the use of the building that's going to come in. There are five existing handicap spots out into the front, they will not be affected, so therefore, we still meet the, we meet the code for handicap spaces.
Did you have a plan of the entire site?
I do not.
Okay.
No. We did, as part of our due diligence, we were able to get a copy of the original site plan back in the late 1900s, not late 1900s, the 1990s. It was the old linear technology building that went in. We were to verify, there was not an ASB plan, but we were able to verify that most of the amenities shown on that plan were indeed constructed. We don't have to revise or otherwise touch any of the water services, any of the sewer services. We do add a drain, which is shown on the site plan that's on the screen, just to pick up any of the stormwater runoff that runs into the dock area, and we connect that into the existing drainage system. I did receive comments from departments, I don't know if you'd like me to go over those, typically you guys like to read those into the record. You can do whatever you'd like, but it's a fairly...
Wait a minute.
A fairly benign proposal, and I know it was quick, but I'd be able to answer the questions.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Brian, you mentioned that the parking's adequate for the use coming in. What is the use coming in?
So it's explained in the narrative, the use coming in is a computer IT renovator, a refurbisher, and a renovator. They take in old computers, and Mike Milano's here to, if I do say anything wrong, he's going to throw some at me and get up here and explain the right way to do it. But it's an IT refurbisher, they're going to take old ITs, laptop, things like that, break them down, refurbish them, and then resell them. And so the breakdown in use, it's, the existing building's 30,000 square feet, 29,900 and some change. It'll be roughly broken down into about 7,500 square feet of office space and 22,500 square feet of warehouse space.
And how many proposed employees approximately?
How about 30 employees?
Okay.
I probably should add that on the plan, we also included a sewer note.
A what?
A sewer note, a sewer use note for the new use, for the breaking down the office space and the employee space per Title V calculations, and I do believe engineering covers that in some of their comments.
Great, thank you. Are there any, what kinds of, what kinds of things are expected to be delivered to the loading dock that would be different than what is currently either delivered or maintained there?
So there is no loading dock now, so the building is being retrofitted with a loading dock, and it's really just going to be the, you know, the chassis and the, the old IT equipment that needs to be refurbished will be coming in. The newer refurbished equipment will be going out.
Okay, so nothing that would make it, qualify it as a loophole for the stormwater?
No.
Okay.
No. Again, in my narrative, the business that's coming in has all sorts of these ISO certifications, which are a little bit above me. If you wanted me to invite Michael up here to talk about some of those certifications, they can, but some of that information is in that narrative. They are, they are, you know, looked at every year in order to keep up those certifications and whatnot, so it is not a hazardous waste or a special waste type of business. It's literally refurbishing the equipment and then sending it back out.
Okay, okay. And can you just talk through the drainage, your contribution to the, Evan, if you can put up the plan?
So in order to, excuse me, in order to create the four foot or the 48 inch height for the loading dock, if I may come up to the screen?
Yeah, please.
What we do, this is the existing edge of the building here, we are going to regrade this area here, so it'll be a ramp coming down, so that when the truck sits there, it's at that four-foot loading dock height. And because we're creating that low area, the stormwater would collect here, so we have a trench drain, a manhole, and then we connect that into the existing drain line.
Okay.
There was no increase in previous area. This is all paving here anyways. We do take a landscaped island here and move it, and we take this landscaped island here and revise it to this location, so that a truck will come in.
Okay, and then that shaded area that's on the bottom?
So this is just an area of some additional pavement, just to provide a little bit more maneuverability for a truck to be able to just come in. You might be able, a smaller truck could come in and go back in one motion rather than have to turn it around.
And does that affect the current screening, landscaping?
So if you want to go just a little, just a little bit up, there is a row of our bodies here, so we are going to have to cut into those a little bit, but they will be replanted here.
Okay, but you still, you still meet any required setbacks as far as landscaping goes for the property? Okay. All right, thank you.
So I'm certainly not an expert on this sort of thing, but my understanding is that when you take apart computers, that there's some heavy metals involved, and so I guess you're presumably trying to maintain those for, you know, for, because they're, they have value, but, and there wouldn't be any risk of leakage or spillage or contamination of anything?
No, they're basically cards, the way they're assembled here.
Michael, you got to...
Can you come up to the microphone?
Introduce yourself.
Sorry.
No, they're just dismantled. There's no breaking of anything inside the computer or inside, inside of...
Can we have your name, please?
Whatever IT equipment's being broken down are cards, and what they do is, once they're sorted, they separate them. They're all... And what they do is, once they're sorted, they separate them. They all go into different bins. They then get tested and in some cases rebuilt, in some cases just sold as parts.
I see.
So it's a, it's a great business.
Yeah, we need the name?
We didn't need the name for the minutes.
What's that?
Michael Milano.
And with, with, with whom are you?
New England Real Estate Services. I represent RB, RR B Real Estate, who's the owner.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a few questions. Where is the breakdown of the computers gonna happen? In the office space or the warehouse space?
You should sit up here.
Where does the breakdown of the, of the computers happen? In the warehouse space or the office? Yes, strictly in the warehouse space.
Which is it, warehouse or office space?
Warehouse. Warehouse.
So just for some housekeeping of our documentation, based on our current definition of warehouse, that technically wouldn't be a warehouse anymore. That'd be really light manufacturing space. So just to keep documentation clean, it might be good to update the plan and the, the narrative to be a little bit more light manufacturing instead of warehouse space. Or light manufacturing and warehouse space, maybe.
Yeah, I think that's a better description because a lot of it is stored there for a long period of time.
The other thing I noticed in the narrative, that you have parking documented at one per 250, I think, square feet. And I think for, for that space, it would be one per 200 square feet. So if we, if you could correct that.
Apologize, we can do that.
Okay, thanks. And then on, for the loading dock, can you bring up the schematic? Where does that loading dock go into? Is it the office? It looks like it's the office space on your plans.
No, there's, no, there's double doors there that lead into what used to be lab space. And that is going to be used as our warehouse and breakdown space.
Okay, all right. And then you mentioned two bays, but I'm seeing three garage doors on it.
Two, three.
Yeah, one, two, three.
This is just an overhead door. This is the loading dock area here, two loading docks. This is just an at-grade door.
What would that be used for?
Probably a van pickup or delivery. Yep, if it's something like FedEx or whatever, that doesn't have truck dock capability.
Okay, so it's essentially a, a loading dock for three vehicles. And if you have a van, would that block the parking spaces that are right in front of that garage door?
If there was a van parked there for any, for any period of length of time, it very well could block these spaces here. Because that door would be here.
Okay. On the swept path analysis, I am also noticing that the only way that that truck can get in there is to go into two parking spaces. So if that's actually gonna be used for a loading dock, my recommendation would be to not allow parking in those two spaces?
We can, we can hatch that up.
Okay. And then the other concern I have is you're not showing snow storage on here. So snow storage should be indicated as to where that would be, and if it's gonna be taking up parking spaces.
We can have that.
Where's the existing snow space? I mean, this is, this is not a new building.
Correct, no.
So they must already have snow, right, Chris? They must already have locations for it.
I would assume so, but depending on where they're putting it, that may hinder additional spaces or trucks.
As in, I won't reconfiguring the parking?
No.
So if they're reconfiguring the parking, they need to show where the
We can show that.
Yeah, just to make sure.
And then I'm also seeing that it, the truck is going over the curb in two spots, it looks like. On North Road, and then I think on Research Place.
So that's just the overhang of the truck. The actual wheel path stays within the pavement?
Okay.
And so what we do is We just wanted to show that the, the existing egress can handle that, and he comes in.
Okay.
And the front of the truck will overhang that as he pulls his maneuver, his backup maneuver into the loading dock, so.
And also, this building's not actually on North Road, right? There's a hedge, and it's, it's actually on Research Place.
Right.
They wouldn't drive on North Road because they're pretty far back from it.
There's no egress from North Road.
Right.
It's all from Research Place, yeah.
No, but the truck does overhang on that side of the parking lot. And I think Joel mentioned it, but it'd be good to have a little bit more, if you're taking out arbivites, if you're able to put a little bit more back in, in places. That's all I've got.
Pretty light for you, Chris. Pretty light for you.
That wasn't me that said that. No, it was me.
Okay, shall we read the letters?
Sure, so we have, let's see, North Chumsford Water District, no concerns, dated 10/8/24. We had two, we had a letter and then a subsequent email from Fire, Fire Department, Captain of Josh Abbott. We had an email dated October 21st, 2024, saying, thanks for the phone call and explanation of the site modifications. Currently, the Fire Prevention Office has no concerns with site access, as the ingress egress have not changed. Border Health, no concerns, dated October 7th, 2024. Police Department, no concerns, dated October 8th, 2024. And then Public Works from Project Engineer Sheila Joyce. There were numerous, let's see, there was a number of comments regarding sewer, no increase to the town of Chumsford Sewer infrastructure. Stating, stating all the sewer usage regulations. I'm just paraphrasing here. A clearly labeled and prominently displayed spill kit should be present at the loading dock. Recommended general conditions of approval. Regarding all stormwater practices be followed. Sedimentation control devices within the town's right-of-way, erosion controls, all handicap signs must meet the requirements. It states those. Applicant site contractor must schedule a pre-construction meeting with DPW Engineering prior to the start of work, and a trench permit shall be obtained from DPW for the work described. And also Treasurer's Office, no concerns. I believe that's all.
Okay, is there any further questions or comments for the applicant? And this being, oh, it's an administrative review, so we don't have public
Not required.
Public input required. But we're able to offer it if we feel so compelled. Did you have another question, Mike?
No, I was just gonna ask, Brian, just on the swept, swept analysis, why is the truck turning around? This is just from my own knowledge here. There's a parking lot in the backside of this that continues around the back where the truck could turn around in that area. Why is that not shown? Why is that, is it the fire department that chooses that it turns around right up front?
Nope, that was us. We just didn't want to have to, if you'd go out, if I, if I did show the entire site.
Right, why wouldn't they go all the way in the back and then come around that triangle?
It does go around, the WB62 has a little bit of trouble coming all the way around there.
Okay.
So smaller trucks could do that, but we, we showed that the, the better swept path was just to move that island and keep everything right there.
Do it right in the front?
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know if that was a requirement by the town or
Nope, nope.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this minor site plan review? Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a motion?
We can motion, I'll make a motion to approve the minor site plan review with the items, Chris, listed previously.
I'll gladly second.
I mean, the, the snow storage?
I had revised the narrative to include light manufacturing and warehousing. Hatch out a couple of spaces to accommodate the swept path analysis, show snow storage, show the relocation of new arbivites, and change the parking calc, parking calculation based upon the correct ratio.
So with those changes to the parking, parking, et cetera, will there still be adequate parking?
There will be.
Okay. All right, motion by Anita?
Second.
Second by Mike Raisbeck?
Yeah, and I had just one question.
Oh, sorry.
For, is that, is, do I vote as associate member? Do I vote on a site plan review even though we're missing a member?
I don't recall the specifics of the
Chris, do you recall?
Procedures and protocols.
You don't recall, but I think we had said you do.
Oh, okay. I thought it was not, but
Well, you know, I'm not sure that's gonna be crucial to
Oh, yeah, I, I
Why don't we let him vote and if somebody wants to?
Okay.
All right.
So all in favor?
Aye.
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 An aye from Chris in the peanut gallery, so it's seven to zero. Next up, we have new public hearing, 3/21.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Bilrika Road, Clover Behavioral Health, requesting to obtain a special permit per Section 195-5 Use Table Line D21 to operate a medical clinic and any other zoning relief deemed necessary. The site is located in the IA zoning district and is identified as parcel ID MAP 87 Block 328 Lot 4.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Penn. I'm a representative of Clover Behavioral Health. And yes, I'm here to request a special permit for a medical clinic, more specifically to operate mental health services. To kind of give a brief explanation of what this special permit would allow us to do and the license it would allow us to obtain is to provide clinical and medical services for those diagnosed with primary mental health disorders. The way in which we provide services for these individuals is individual counseling on a weekly basis, group counseling on a daily basis. And we also have psychiatric nurse practitioners and a medical doctor for any patients who may need those services as well. We typically operate between the hours of regular business hours, nine to five, Monday through Friday. And we hopefully, one day, will operate an evening program for anyone who may be in school or at work and still wishes to engage in these services. Typical diagnosis is that we would be treating depression, anxiety, trauma disorders, bipolar disorders. And we have some pretty, I would say stringent requirements as to who is appropriate for our level of care and how we go about making sure someone is appropriate to admit to our program. We have medical and clinical reviews to make sure that a person is stable and appropriate to be at an outpatient level of care. Couple important points, I think, just be, you know, kind of put out there, that we do not dispense or distribute medications of any kind. We can prescribe, but that is done in the same practice as a primary care physician would do, handled at a pharmacy, et cetera. Patients do not live or are lodged, boarded in any fashion at the facility. And everyone who engages in our program is prescreened, enrolled, and scheduled accordingly. It's not kind of a open clinic free-for-all. Anyone can kind of show up at any time and engage in any fashion that they want. So that's kind of the general basis of what we're here to do, what we'd like to do, and the services we'd really like to bring to the town.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I've got one question, a couple of questions. The first question is, is this a new tenant going in or current tenant looking at, to add additional services?
So that's what I answered. It's actually kind of a little bit of both. So I am a new tenant in this building. One of the services we wish to offer, which is the mental health side of our services, requires us to be licensed as a clinic. Therefore, for the one license that we need, we have to be registered as a mental health clinic. There are other counseling services that we offer for other kind of basic needs that would qualify us as a medical office space. Me and Evan and Jose probably exchanged 35 emails trying to drill down on exactly what this is because obviously licensing with DPH can, you know, you can get in the weeds, so I think, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, so you are, you're a current tenant, but a new tenant.
Yes, so we, we, yes, we're, we're, we're in there now. We're staffing up, getting ready to provide the services we can. And then obviously, if this special permit goes through, we will then submit a application for this license as well. That would come later down the line.
Okay. So then Evan, my question is probably, my next question's probably to you. Because the DPW letter, if I read it correctly, was related to essentially an assumption that there are gonna be no additional staff or patients for sewer. Trying to remember where I read that.
I, I think I may be able to provide some clarity because I did review all of the comments that were submitted by all of the departments. So the, in my narrative, the amount of people enrolled in our program and staff assumes all the license that we will have. We are currently not seeing patients at the moment. We have some services that we can start with right away. This particular service will take us more time to acquire the license, and of course, I need the special permit granted from you guys. So as of today, the business is not open. It will be open soon with limited services that are allowed by right. And then this service will then become allowed that I can apply for at a later date and add this line of service to our business. So the estimate, the estimate that I gave around, you know, 40 people, including staff, at any given time is assuming all services and all licenses are operating as normally. And in reference to some of those comments, 500 gallons per day is, you know, I don't think we'll even come close to that. We just, you know, just bathroom hand washing, et cetera. And if we do, I'm happy to pay any fine or address that in any way I need to. But not, you know, we, we don't need any major medical equipment or anything like that.
Okay. And then Evan, a question for you on the parking calculations. If I'm reading that table correctly, the total parking spaces is 258. And with this clinic, it would be a 232 being used, and then the two vacant spaces, or two vacant bays would be left with 26 spaces in the calculations?
That's, yeah, I mean, that's probably the best way to interpret this. That table, as I understand it, is based upon requirements.
Yep. So if in this property down the road, those two bays become occupied and require more parking, they would have to come back to us then, right?
Technically, if, if the calculations continue, you're correct. It would be deemed that the site would be underparked, and that would require a special permit from the planning board.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Can you talk us through the floor plan as far as how people access and, and leave and, and what the flow is through the, through the floor?
Absolutely. I'm gonna step over here.
Yes, please.
This is the primary entrance that will be used. So this is on the backside of the building. The building has two primary entrances. This is going to be just a common waiting area. We have a desk set up, et cetera. These will be our two group rooms. They can comfortably fit about 10 to 15 people, including a therapist. And then these remaining offices will be used for primary therapy and counseling. You know, some of them have glass, so we've put up kind of You know, some of them have glass, so we've put up kind of curtains, blinds to protect patient privacy. And then this kitchenette is just a sink and we're going to put a refrigerator in there. You know, we like to provide lunch, drinks, et cetera, make it a comfortable experience for everybody.
Okay. And about how many people can, are you planning on seating in your lobby?
Oh, the lobby is just going to be for patient intake.
Right.
So, you know, one at a time. They're scheduled accordingly. We try to break that scheduling up. You know, we typically admit one to two people at most a day. And that's, that's if we're extremely busy. And the intake takes about 45 minutes because we've prescreened them before they came to the facility. So everyone completes a phone assessment to make sure that we are in appropriate service for them. And then, you know, if something's going on, a clinician's busy or in a therapy session, the individual will wait in the lobby until that therapist clinician is free to finish the intake.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions about the floor plan? I'm over here. Okay.
So the people from the, going to the group, I'm sorry, would be just going straight in?
Yes, so if they're enrolled in the program and they're scheduled for groups during that day because, you know, it's typically about three days a week they'll attend for each individual. They'll show up, they'll check in with reception, hey, you know, John Doe, I'm here for my services. And they'll all head into the group as appropriate. And they're scheduled in each group room depending on the specific groups that are being done that day. I'll step back to the mic. The specific groups that are being done that day in accordance with their treatment plan. So we offer a variety of different groups, life skill, life skill building, education, clinical services. So it's done with their treatment plan.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Guess we'll open it up, see if anyone has, if we're done with our questions, I'll see if anyone from the gallery has any thoughts or questions or concerns? Or on Zoom?
I do have a letter from some residents of the town. If I could read that, this be the appropriate time to read that into the record?
Sure.
Okay. Just, it's a letter of support that I just wanted to read. So it's from David Harmon, Nathan Harmon, and Raymond McClusker. We are excited to express our unwavering support for Clover Behavioral Health, Health Incorporated into our community. We acknowledge the paramount importance of this service they seek to provide for the well-being of our neighbors and communities. We firmly believe that these services would be a valuable addition to our town and we are delighted to lend our support to this endeavor. We have confidence in the integrity and benevolence of the project's founders and we are confident that they will dedicate themselves to the betterment of our community. And I printed copies if they're needed. So, thank you.
Yeah, we should get a copy into the record.
Yeah, I'll take that.
Sure.
Okay. Is there anyone else who has a comment at all? Seeing none. I'll take a motion.
We have to open a public hearing, don't we?
I, I just.
She just opened it.
I just did. No one has anything to say.
Okay, then, move to close to public hearing.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Including Chris, unanimous? Evan, you kept one of those letters for the file?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, now I will take a motion.
I would move that we grant the special permit.
Do you want to do departmental letters into the record or is that not required?
I don't think anything's changed.
Are there any that have any?
Uh, let's see. We kind of went over Public Works. It's just, it says no sore comments from project engineer Sheila Joyce. No sore calculations were submitted. Confirm that the physical footprint of the clinic is not changing. Mental health clinic to medical office or center is for licensure, but number of employees and clients on site is not changing. The DPW shall monitor enforced sewer flow limitations and impose penalties for violations thereof in accordance with the town's sewer policy.
And everybody else was no comment, right?
Yep. Yes, and then Jose, Jose Negron, building commissioner. Mr. Pena, please be advised that if you're, should your business here in regards be approved by the planning board, you need to meet minimum standard requirements of the building code. Also, a change of use, maintain use inspection will be required by the building department. Jose Negron. All others were no concerns or no comments.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I will move that we grant the special permit per 195-5.
Second.
Okay, move by Mike Gracebeck, second by Anita, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous, including Chris on Zoom? Okay.
Thank you. I'll sit. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thanks for coming down.
Next up, we have 10 Independence Drive looking to obtain a special permit per section 195-5 use table line D dot 37 to operate an adult daycare facility and any other zoning relief deemed necessary. The property is located in the CD zoning district and is identified as parcel ID MAP 62 block 295 lot 2.
Someone did.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Adam Costa. I'm an attorney with the firm of Mead, Taller, and Costa. As you can hear, I've got a bit of laryngitis this evening, not ideal in this line of work, so I apologize. But the good news is you're not going to hear much from me. I'm going to make a brief introduction of the project and then I'm going to hand it over to the project engineer to sort of walk you through the plans that we've submitted. So Ashok Patel, who is the principal of the LLC that is named as the applicant, is here with me this evening. Hushia Afshar, who is with Taj Engineering, is also with me this evening and he'll present the plans momentarily. This is a proposal for a portion of the 10 Independence Drive property. Those of you who have been around for a while, probably most of you know the site is the old Radisson Hotel site. Portions of the site have previously or are currently under redevelopment for hotel uses. But there is a portion of the site known as Building Three. We'll get to that. You can see it on your screen. It's in the middle there. It's shaded darker color gray. That's known as Building Three. That's the portion of the site that is before you this evening. I will note this now because I did see it in one or two of the departmental comments. There is a reference on the plan to the potential for residential units on the second story of this Building Three. That is not something we're currently proposing. This proposal is simply for redevelopment of the building for an adult daycare use. A bit of context here, this is a proposal that has been, something that has been in the discussion phase for the better part of a couple of years now. We were a bit confused at first and we spoke with your former town council because we reviewed your, your use table and your use table seemed to prohibit adult daycare in the general commercial or the CD district, which is where this property is located. As we dug a bit deeper, we saw that it had just a few years ago not been prohibited. And so when we did a bit of research, we found that when your zoning bylaw was recodified, presumably in error, this was a deemed a prohibited use in the CD district, even though it had previously been allowed. When your bylaw went through the conversion from sort of the narrative format to a table of use regulations. So this came back before town meeting, I think it was last spring or last fall, as an amendment. It passed, I think it was unanimous at town meeting to add this as a special permit use back into the table. And so with that permission, we're now before you asking for the, the special permit for the use. I'm not going to get into the particulars just yet, although I'm happy to address them after Hushia walks through the plan. But I reviewed all of the departmental comments. A few departments had no comment, but a few had recommended conditions or requested adjustments to the plan. And we're certainly prepared to address those and really don't have any objection to the suggestions made by your various departments. But with that, I'm going to get Hushia to the podium so he can sort of walk you through the, the site plans that have been submitted as well as the, the floor plan showing how we intend to redesign and redevelop the interior of the building.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Hushman Afshar from Taj Engineering LLC here in town. The, like Attorney Costa mentioned, this used to be the old Radisson Hotel that, you know, I'm sure almost all of us who live here in town had some kind of function in there and used the ballrooms. I did for my son's rehearsal dinner. Exactly where the adult daycare is being proposed. So the, as you know, the, the entire building, including the Holiday Inn, all the way to the east, this was all one building connected with a passageway, walkway. A few years ago, we went through what you see on the all the way most easterly side of the parcel, which is Holiday Inn now. And the new franchise Holiday Inn took place. The new building was renovated to what you see right now, the sign. We went through all that process. And the site also got refurbished and drainage system got cleaned up and so on and so forth. Basically, in terms of site work, that is exactly what's going to happen right now to the central and westerly, what we call building, Radisson Holiday Inn, we call Building Two because that was created. And now we are calling the westerly side, which is all the guest rooms of the hotel, which is going to be a Hilton franchise, Building One. And the ballrooms, which is hashed, is going to be, we just called it for the sake of conversation, Building Three. So the ballrooms on the first floor only are being converted to the adult daycare. And after, once we came to know that, yes, zoning allows to do that, we followed per the code, the main code being mainly the CMR, 105 CMR, Mass Department of Public Health, which controls the adult daycares. And then the state plumbing code, and then architectural access board. We did the alteration of the interior of the first floor to convert it into a adult daycare. Before we move to the next page, if I can come to the board, the main access will be right here where this ramp is and coming in. On the floor plan, you will see that it has got its own independent access, totally separate from the hotel and the guest, guest rooms. And then there is another ramp here, new ramp here that comes in here and enters into the, this first floor where the adult daycare is. And also this set of stairs that goes to the same door. And of course, on the first floor, you will see that there are some other areas that you can access, egress way through the back. If you want to talk about parking before we move to the floor plan, the, this is a daycare facility. The residents will be dropped in, dropped in in the morning and picked up in the afternoon. So right now, right in front of the daycare area, we have allocated five vans, handicap location for five full-size vans. And then overall, there are at least 25 spaces allowed for the daycare. I would like to add at this point that the Radisson Hotel ballroom, first floor and second floor had almost a capacity of almost 500 people, 500 guests for the ballrooms. Over 300 for the first floor and about 200 on the second floor. The total number of residents, again, according to the requirements of the Department of Public Health and the regulations, the total maximum number of residents that we can have for the adult daycares is 150 people. The requirement is 50 square foot of floor area per resident. So we have 7,500 square foot of floor area allocated to the, to the adult daycare. So with that, I mean, if you, if you want to go back to the parking, we have plenty of parking at this site. I mean, every, every room, the only, the only correction on your site plan is that when initially we were preparing this, we were told the architectural drawings were in the process of preparation for the hotel, Building One, from here to here, the 100 rooms. So we assumed 100 parkings for 100 guest rooms. But later on, when the plans were completed, it was only 90 rooms. So we have 10, 10 parking spaces available there. And also at the end of parking lot here, parking has never been a problem, never, on this, on this side. If you, at the end of here, we had about 43 here, from here down, additional parking. The total is about 43 more spaces additional reserved or it's available anyway for any use where it needs be. And of course, Holiday Inn has on its own area and parking and it's all set and done and it's running, functioning without any problem. These are the details for the access ramp on the side, on the east side of the building two. And we can go to the floor area now, if you may. So the adult daycare is basically from here, this hatched area, here, this area, here, and here. This is the separate entrance that is completely separated from rest of the hotel and has got nothing to do with each other. The grand stairs will be removed. This partition between the ballroom and the front foyer will be removed. An open space so all the residents can mingle. They are, the, this is the nurses' office, again, Department of Public Health. Is, once everything is done, we get your approval and so on and so forth, everything is built. They have to come and inspect and approve in order to issue the license.
Sure.
So, so this, this, this will be all glass walls so the nurses can see the residents. We have an admin office, part of the daycare, all the plumbing, all the bathrooms, handicapped and so on and so forth. It's shown, shown on the plan. Further, again, architectural access code and requirements on both sides for easy access of the residents. These are older people, obviously. So, and the, the other access, we said this was the main one. This is the other one coming from here and the ramp here and through, and here. And there are these doors here also in the back that can get into this hallway, go down the stairs to the back or come here and go down the stairs again to this side of the building. The other plan is the details of the bathrooms and showers, which meets again the regulations. And this is the egress plan that shows the, how in case of emergency, all the access and egress will work. And it's all, all the calculations is shown. So with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any question if I can.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't, that's.
No, the only, the only thing, I, I mean, we're not really changing any of the layout right now of the parking and the entrance way. It looks like it's pretty existing because.
No, sir. Yes. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, the drainage pattern will not change. The elevation, the grades, nothing in terms of, it will be resurfaced.
Yeah, the reason, the parking lot right now and the way it flows is the way it's existing today.
That's correct.
So how is that going to work when the hotel does come back, full functioning, with your shuttle buses and drop off? That's, I just see at the end of the cul-de-sac there, a little bit of a moving around, that it's just not very clear on how that flow is going to work. Because I've seen it before with the hotel in full function, with functions going on there. It was, so it seems like it's just not being improved by this new, by this new use.
The, the, right now, the maximum required, which is actually on the conservative side in terms of, we are proposing more than what we need.
Right.
These are four, these four are for the adult daycare, for the vans.
Yeah.
Then we have these 12 and this nine for the adult daycare. The rest is all for the hotel.
Yeah, I understand the, the point that you're going to have adequate parking because people are going to be shuttlebussed in and, and shuttled in. It's just that when you come in that main entrance there.
Yes.
It's the same entrance as the hotel entrance. That's how people flow in. They turn to the left. You're going to be the first door on the right and then there the second door under the canopy.
Were you talking about this on this, off the circle?
Are you talking?
Yeah, straight in off the circle. People are going to come in that way. And then you're going to drop off right there at that, that doorway.
Okay, yeah?
Yeah, right, yep, right there.
Okay.
And then you're just going to, then the people entering the hotel are more to your left, keep going down.
Yeah.
Right there. So what separates the hotel separation versus the, the driveway for the hotel and the driveway for the, I mean, if, if it's needed for the adult daycare?
There, there is no separation really needed.
Okay.
Because these are drop off, park, and go back, pick up, and leave the site. back, pick up, and leave the site. The guests can come, drop off, whatever, and then go park anywhere they want.
And the hotel's not in use now, right? It's not in use.
The hotel is under renovation right now.
It's under renovation.
Covid did it to all of us.
To follow up on Mike's questions, will this adult daycare have dedicated vans, a fleet of vans, or is that going to be external transport vans?
No, it will be dedicated vans, probably the name of the facility printed on them and so on and so forth. Assuming that, that all of the residents will be dropped, will be need this pick up and drop off. Some of them could be, very well, the experience has shown, some of them, the family members come, drop them off and go. They don't even stay on there.
So my question is, how many vans in the fleet? And if those take up the three spots, where are the families going to park?
Families, they don't need to park.
For drop off.
They said drop off.
So the folks in the adult daycare don't need any assistance getting from that walkway into the entry?
They will be dropped off right here at the main entrance where the ramp is, and then the employees from there on will help them to go in. The drop off and the, and the pick up, it's a certain time, so the facility is assisting with that.
Okay, so the employees assist with getting
Right.
the participants from the car to the inside. It's not the family members.
Exactly. Some of them could be handicapped, wheelchair, they need to be pushed.
Okay.
Kind of like preschool.
Well, that's, that's what I said, and my narrative, actually.
Preschool parents bring the kids in, and that's my concern, is that you're going to have a lot of congestion of parked cars there, or you're going to have people parking way far away and having to cross significant lanes of traffic.
I'd drop mine at the door.
Throw them out and run.
Well, along those lines, is, is there a strip there where essentially that's for drop off? In other words, it's a designated area for drop off?
Right here in front, we have this
That hashed area there?
Exactly.
Okay, that's for drop off, okay.
And it's moving, it's moving, it's not, you want to drop off your old dad and go to work. Otherwise you'll be fired if you're late.
And, but that hashed lane's going right under the, the direction is right under the hotel canopy?
No, it will stop somewhere here, in the worst case. But again, I mean, there might be, there will be a queue here, but it's going to flow.
I don't know, I've got some significant concerns about the traffic flow in this parking
It's working in, break it, in a more congested, in a more smaller, I should say, parking space, and they come and go.
Actually, my question is, who is the, like, what daycare company is going in here? Can find that. Do you have a name for this?
What's the name of the adult daycare company?
There is a name, right now we're just getting the pool and then building the whole campaign behind the name and the design.
Okay.
No name yet.
If we come up with a name.
If you build it, they'll come.
Okay, so if that's the case, then I've got even more concerns about this, because the adult daycare that I'm seeing on Brick Hill Road, their parking lot, I've driven by during drop off, and it's quite congested. They've got a significant amount of vans in that fleet, they've got other cars in there with staff, and I can't imagine that volume going in and out of this space with the hotels in full use.
We believe it will work.
Potentially, if you see some reconfiguration of this parking lot.
Well, the employees' parking can, there is so much extra space at the other end of the parking, parking area, parking lot, that employees can park as far as they want.
I'm not concerned about the employees, I'm concerned about the amount of, so in, so in the parking lot, you've got parking spaces labeled as ADC. Are those going to be dedicated spots, those specific spots for the adult daycare?
Yes.
Is that just for the count in general?
That is 25 spaces for the adult daycare.
Will they have signs? Will there be signage? I'm over here. Are they, is there going to be signage indicating that, that it's dedicated to the adult daycare?
Oh, yes, of course.
And then there'll be other handicap spots for the hotel?
Well, not just handicap, but that it's a sign that says for adult daycare only or something like that.
Yes, they will be very, very well designated. The handicap spaces also for the hotel, there are a whole bunch in the back that they can easily come from the rear access.
I mean, I'm looking at the nine adult daycare spots just above where the devils cursor is, and you're going to have people parking there, walking across, depending on when check-in, checkout time is for the hotels, you're going to have people walking across a lot of traffic potentially.
They are mainly for employees, they park and they
I'm talking more about the drop off for participants in the program.
Ashok Patel with the application. Typically, if, I mean, everybody's been to a hotel. The normal guest check-in time is anywhere between 3 o'clock onwards to as late as 9, 10 o'clock. So for 91 or 92-room hotel that we have, you're going to have a very big span of check-in time, so nobody comes, like, not all 90 people come in at 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock, right? That's, that's a typical traffic flow. So there's really zero issue in terms of when the guest arrive for the hotel side. In the morning, people leave at all different hours. So checkout time's typically 11, but breakfast is between 6 and 10, right? So people are leaving at all different hours also. They're not all leaving at 6 or 7 or 8 or 9, right? So I think the complimentary use that this building has versus the hotel flow and the hotel traffic is actually a perfect match. There's no real overlap of heavy usage of any of the parking or any of the areas that are designated on the site plan. I mean, you couldn't have a better complimentary use. So there's nobody in the hotel in the daytime when these seniors are in the building, for example. And by the time the seniors go home, the hotel guests start coming in.
There's no rush or whatever.
There's, yeah, there's nothing that, like, overlaps, or like, it just, I think it's a, it's a, it's a pretty efficient use of both spaces.
No, I agree with you.
I think it's great use, and I think it's a good opportunity for you. I just think that right at the end of that cul-de-sac where you have the two entrances, I think you could, and maybe we're stepping over our lines here and haven't told us not, but I think you could take away some of this two-way traffic and make a one-way flow, it would, it would ease traffic congestion. I think you've got, there's so many arrows going totally different directions that I think you're looking
Yeah, we can make
confusing looking at it now.
I understand.
And I know what it's like on the, on the ground, because I've been there. And I think you're bringing in vans, adults, daycare for adults, so you're bringing in, you know, different types of health issues with adults and different things, right? But you also, you know, a different senior citizens that are coming in here, and then you've got a general use hotel, the same complex with the same entrances. It would have been nice to see kind of like a modification made. You've taken an existing plan and not addressed, not addressed it. That's all we're trying to say.
We can take this flow out.
You can bring it in, then bring it around the hotel, and then bring it back out. Right where your pen is right now, you've got in and out traffic, you've got in and out traffic to the right going to the Holiday Inn, then you've got two-way traffic going in between the Holiday Inn and in front of your daycare. I mean, it just seems like cars are going everywhere.
Well, we can take this flow out, so that the flow can go this way, and this flow can go there, because they have their own access.
Yeah, we understand what you're saying, yeah.
Asking you as the engineer to maybe clean it up a little bit and make it a little bit more safe. That's all. We're not, we're not, I'm not against the project, I think it's great.
Yeah, I mean, we, we just, like, even when the both, even when 214 rooms are open and full ballroom wasn't used, I think there is enough driveways and enough space that we've never really seen any heavy congestion there, even like prior to Covid, for example.
But you don't have any sidewalks, though. There's no, you gotta, you gotta admit, that lower parking lot has no sidewalks, and people are walking in the parking lot.
And it is different, this population.
So we're creating, we're creating new sidewalks along the building.
Right. But if people are parking down in these lower lots to get to that adult daycare, they're going to have to walk in front of the main entrance of the hotel, they have to cross the traffic flow to get to the, to the
If somebody was parking in the lower lot who's using the adult daycare, that's probably never going to happen, because it's all drop in and drop out, there's nobody driving there as a senior.
But you don't know, unless you're going to have signs there, don't park here, right? But they're going to park, people could park anywhere.
No, no, but what I'm saying is the seniors being dropped off, they're not driving themselves, right? So they would never be, there's no situation where a senior's going to park themselves in the lower parking lot and walk, is my point.
So there's no, there's no senior citizens that come here?
They don't, yeah. Everybody's being picked up and dropped off, yeah.
Okay.
Correct, correct. That's the thing, as we're saying, like, we can direct all the employees to a certain area of the parking lot for parking, which is usually going to be the least amount of used spaces away from the hotel, right? And everybody else's spaces are preserved, which is guests and drop off vans.
Not every person dropping off has a handicap placard. Some family members will be parking in that lower lot, crossing over multiple lanes of traffic without crosswalks or without sidewalks.
Like, if you have to go in for something?
I think we're getting into the weeds. Yeah, I don't want to get in the weeds, I was just trying to clean up the main entrance.
Yeah, we can make some one ways, I understand, Mr. Walsh, I do understand what you're saying, yes. Can we make a couple of them one ways? Yes, absolutely. We're not opposed to that, we just, we just need to do some homework on which ones make sense, that's all.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
We're not opposed to that.
I didn't want to create a major issue for the system flow.
No, but that's a good point, though, because that is, that is, like, we've all used it, it is a little
Quonk.
Yeah.
I think the, I think the circle there is, was originally there created so that all the parking lots kind of connected and it all kind of flows, right? So
But now we have different uses and different, like, that Holiday Inn is one, like, it might be nice to try to clean it up while
Yeah, I think that, probably, I would say 100% of the traffic in the Holiday Inn exits on the other side of the driveway, which is not the traffic light, because to them, that's the easiest and that's where the sign is. So like, we rarely see traffic coming on the Alpine side where the traffic light is. Most people exit from the other side, which is already connected where the dental office is.
Why would they do that if there's no light there? That's really hard to get out of.
Because that's where the hotel sign is, like, that's where the driveway is, that's the first driveway they see when they're coming out of 495.
They don't know any different
Exactly.
Yeah, they come in that way, but once they see the Alpine there
Okay. I have a question, what about the lecture room and the meeting room? Do they go with the daycare facility?
Whatever's on the floor plan, yes, everything, I'm not looking at the plans.
So there's the participant area, and then the behind at the kitchen?
No, those are
No, they're not part of the
Just what's hashed right now is part of that.
Yes.
Okay. So are they going to have meals here?
Yes.
So they will use that kitchen?
Yes, in the back, yeah.
But not those rooms?
No, not those rooms, those are in case there's a meeting room, yeah, for the
Yeah, those are, those are, they're not even being renovated right now, they're just kept as is, they're not part of the program.
That's why they have a separate access also, those rooms.
Separate what?
Access.
Okay.
I think that, I think that needs to be cleaned up a little bit, as to what exactly is the adult daycare footprint?
If you see the hashed area, that's the adult daycare footprint.
And plus the restrooms.
Right, but it has non-hatched areas that are the bathrooms and stuff, which I'm presuming they're going to use, so it would be good to know what in the floor plan is actually the adult daycare and what is not in the adult daycare. That's not clearly identified.
Like the kitchen, now, you say?
That lead into the meeting room.
The kitchen's the ancillary used to the space, so there'd be prep meals and stuff, yes.
So is it going to be used by other people in the structure as well?
No, just for, just for the adult daycare use.
So then, can you hash it and the bathrooms, like, whatever's part of the daycare?
Yeah, that can be done. The bathrooms are created for the adult daycare use, yes.
Okay, but you just said that everything that's
No, as far as where the, as far as most, like, as far as all the seniors are going to be sort of congregating, is the hashed area.
We'll adjust it.
Yeah, we can adjust it, that's fine.
Okay.
So the, so the lecture room and the meeting room would be part of the adult daycare space, but not necessarily used by
We traditionally don't concern ourselves a great deal about inside the walls.
True.
And I think maybe we're going
We do if it's mixed use.
Right, that's what I was getting at, was
I understand your rationale.
There's a hallway with an external entrance in the back, this is located with a hotel, and so there's a question of what other uses might be happening in those rooms, and so that, I mean, I agree with Chris.
I think that also probably is a concern for the licensing agency, which will be
I would think so.
Concerned for the resident's safety, et cetera.
I would think so, but I think we want to be clear about where the adult daycare use is occurring.
Right.
And that's not clearly delineated on this plan. And I assume anything that we grant would be for the first floor, not the second floor, because that's not part of the
Yeah, this is only for the first floor. Second floor plans are still being developed and vetted, so.
Is the first floor, if I remember that inside space correctly, is the first floor open ceiling to the second floor?
It is, which is going to be closed off.
The staircase. Yeah, so stairs
And staircase is coming out, it's going to be a normal ceiling, right?
Okay, so that, that floor will essentially be extended, so it's no longer an open space above?
That's correct, that's correct.
That great hall goes away.
Yep.
It's noted on page A1 of the
I saw it. Okay.
I have one more question, is, so the activity space is all going to be inside? There's going to be no external
Yeah, there's no external activity space, all internal, yes.
On A1 and A2, the entire floor used by the daycare is basically shown, the hashed area and the bathrooms, basically, that's it.
In the kitchen?
A2 has the bathroom shown.
Yeah.
The details of the
Of the bathrooms, yeah.
So that does include the meeting room and the lecture room?
Those are not
They're not, they're not being, they're not being used for this use right now, no.
For the daycare.
It's, it's still not clearly delineated.
Because the bathroom's capacity is designed for the floor space, that is the maximum, like you said, 50 square feet per person calculated into the bathroom space.
For the residents.
So that's, the bathrooms are designed for that use and that square footage, basically.
Okay.
And they open only to the daycare open floor area.
Right, hotel has their own bathroom, they have their own seating space and all that.
Shall we, are we done with questions? And do we have any other deliberation to do? And do we have letters to read?
Building Department, Building Commissioner, be advised, should your proposed adult daycare be approved by the planning board, this building here regarded needs to meet all minimum standard requirements of the building code, energy code as adopted by the Town of Chumsford. All accessible parking, curbs, ramps need to be maintained and are created as deemed necessary and to comply with ADA and 521 CMR. Also, a change of use, maintain use inspection will be required by the Building Department. Health Department, paraphrasing, this proposed project has plans for kitchen facility, which would need to meet the State Sanitary Code 105 CMR 590, minimum sanitation standards for food establishments. This project must also meet the Town of Chumsford provisions, Chapter 201, Board of Health, Article 9, food service and retail food establishment. The applicant would need to complete a food establishment plan review and submit full-stamped architect plans review. Once these plans are approved by the Health Department, the applicant shall then apply for food establishment Once these plans are approved by the Health Department, the applicant shall then apply for food establishment permit. If the project plans to have a dumpster on site, it must meet Town of Chumsford provisions for refuse dumpster collection licensing and operation. Police and Treasurer's Office, no concerns. And then Fire Prevention Office. All pertinent fire codes must be, must be conformed to for the design and the construction of the proposed office. Plans must be submitted to this office as part of the building permit, permitting process for approval. Stamped fire protection plans must be submitted separately for approval by an appropriately licensed professional. All inspections must be completed prior to use. Additionally, the following requirements will need to be met. Separate fire alarm panel with an addressable enunciator at the main entrance. Indicator beacon on the outside of the building, location to be coordinated with this office. Knox box with master keys for all doors at the main entrance. Building number to be visible in the front of the building, also to be coordinated with this office. Wayfinding signage inside the building to be coordinated with the office. The applicant must also file an E911 application with Town Clerk's Office for addressing purposes due to the separation of the occupancies. No cross occupancy will occur on site between the hotel and adult daycare usages. And then Public Works. All existing utilities must be clearly labeled and marked. Site layout should have registry block and planning board signature lines. Include utilities and drainage easement on the site layout. No increase to the Town of Chumsford sewer infrastructure shall be more than the 500 gallons per day. The applicant should analyze sewerage flow, Title V, if proposed conditions, to determine required sewer allocation. This should be submitted to DPW for approval. The applicant has begun coordination with DPW to determine a necessary fee to purchase the required sewer based on the difference of the intended use from the existing sewer usage. There is no Title V or Chumsford Sewer Department base flow for adult daycare, so the applicant will work with the DPW to determine an acceptable daily flow. If it's DPW's understanding the proposed apartments on the second floor are not included in this submission, and sewer capacity for proposed apartments will be evaluated separately. Once the estimated GPD flow is determined, DPW will be able to confirm whether an adjacent sewer line and pump station have the capacity to handle that flow. And then, standard conditions of approval as built plans must be submitted to DPW. The DPW shall monitor and force sewer flow and impose penalty for violations thereof. And all handicap signs must meet all state and town standards. And that is all, I believe.
And for the record, I've had an opportunity to review all those various comments from your departments. We have no objection to the recommendations. Obviously, to obtain the requisite license shore, we're gonna need to show the licensing agency, Building Code compliance, NFPA compliance, State Sanitary Code compliance. We're gonna need to obtain the requisite food service permit and so forth. We have no objection to the DPW suggested conditions, which are fairly standard.
Okay. Shall we proceed? I mean, it seems like we need some revisions of some things, so I guess I'll take a motion to continue the public hearing.
Yeah, before we, before we do, just to clarify, I think the two things, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the two things that we're asking for is, one, for you to, to consider what the traffic flow would be as to whether it would be a one-way sort of around, however you do that, but you're gonna look at that. And then the other one would be a clear delineation of what of the floor plan in that building is adult daycare.
Okay.
I think those are the two.
And are there any public for comments?
That's right.
Are there any comments from the public? Anyone wants to speak?
I don't see anyone on Zoom either.
And then, would it be appropriate, you want to continue?
I just have one question. Is it okay if you work with, I don't know if it's the police department or maybe the planning planner, to work on the one-way thing and submit it? I mean, so you can approve it with that condition, maybe? I don't wanna lose another two or three weeks and just, I'm just trying to, like, we've already lost two years, as Attorney Costa said, trying to get the zoning code corrected. We just like to keep it moving. The construction season is now. The hotel's under renovation. We wanna get this thing into it as fast as we can. We're more than happy to work with whoever you recommend for the one-ways. That's no problem. And the delineation of the space, I mean, it's, it's there, but it's not quite black and white. We can make that black and white. That's not a problem. I mean, they're not astronomical things, right, so.
Are you in there with a building permit yet or a demo permit?
If you give, we're gonna be there and-
I mean, the reason I'm asking is that if you, if you return with revised plans and it's approved and you have a good indication that the board is heading in that direction, I think you're free and clear to submit building permit, plans, and proceed at your own risk.
I was gonna take the approval and get them to the Building Commissioner tomorrow, so.
Does the board understand what I'm, what I'm suggesting here? He's asking, he's concerned about planning board delay for two, three weeks, whatever. What I'm suggesting is during those next two, three weeks, you apply for your building permit.
Yeah, we can-
And then you're not losing two or three weeks.
Kinda ready for that already, almost, yeah.
Will the building inspector accept the application without an approval?
Well, he can start the review, I think, I guess, I mean.
I, I think with my update, it seems like the board and you are heading in a similar direction.
Right.
You're still proceeding at your own risk.
Yeah, we've already vetted this with the Building Commissioner before, so.
But most of the work is interior.
Right. Yeah, it's nothing exterior, right? Except the ramps and the few things that are happening.
Yeah, maybe whatever modification you're making to the circulation.
Yep.
So if the board wants to continue, what date are you looking at?
We're doing it November 13th. That's the next meeting, right?
Yeah.
November 13th.
Are you taking public comment?
Yes, we asked for it. No one spoke up, but you're welcome to speak up, Nancy.
Thank you much. Nancy Araway, 65 Littleton Road. Yeah, I just wanted to provide a comment that I, I was a user of an adult daycare that is managed by the town at the senior center. And my experience using that over the course of several years is that there are a significant number of families that deliver and pick up the participants in the program. And those family members may or may not be mobile themselves. So you have a number of people being delivered independent of the buses, typically either with wheelchairs or canes and walkers. And their, um, their sponsors, if you will, their, their deliverers, may be on canes themselves. So you really do need to take into consideration the amount of parking that's required because the program has a starting time. And therefore, these are all showing up around the same time, within a, you know, within a half an hour time period, and picking up within a half an hour time period. Thank you much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good point.
November 13th will give you adequate time to revise?
Yeah, we'll work on the traffic flows, sure.
Cool.
Thank you.
Then I would, I guess we would leave the public hearing open?
Yes.
And just continue?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will move to continue.
Move to continue the public hearing by Mike Graysbeck, second?
Yep.
I'll second.
Second by Anita, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris, it's unanimous, including Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
November 13th.
Yeah, I think we gotta be able to knock this one off next time.
Okay. Next up, we have a confusing thing. We have Nancy Chen's continued public hearing, which we had agreed when you were last before us to continue till November 13th, but it was placed in error on the agenda for tonight. So my understanding was that we were going to continue it till November 13th, as we had all agreed previously.
You want extra time?
No.
You wanna, you wanna, you wanna present tonight?
Yeah, I, you always-
I know, I did send you an email because the board inadvertently continued to tonight and not to your request of November 13th.
I confused, I thought, because you said the, the planning board has to make a decision in 120 days.
But you gave an extension.
Right, so I confused this, too.
If you wanna, if you wanna continue this to November 13th to give you more time.
I, I, I don't have anything else to do than the plan.
Okay.
I already submitted the architect new drawing and the planning board wanted me to separate the hallway, which we put on the drawing. So residential will go one, one entrance and the office goes through different entrance.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
They don't share the same entrance, office and apartment. Apartment use different entrance than the office. And that's why you suggested I put a door on the hallway, so they don't share the hallway. That was last time we-
Yeah, and there was, on the, on your floor plan, there was also a doorway that went into one of the bathrooms, the restrooms of the apartment. Has that been changed?
That's, we changed the unit altogether because in order to separate the hallway, so the apartment has to be on the one side.
Yeah.
Not in the back of the building, as originally planned. That's why you see the plan A1.
I don't see that bathroom anymore.
Yeah, because it's, it's not on the apartment side.
Did you take the bathroom out of the building?
That, that was there from day one, 35 years ago.
I'm sorry?
That bathroom-
Different units. There are different units being proposed this time.
Oh.
But it's not on the same floor plan.
But where's the bathroom?
So the initial units were 15, 17, and 19, and 19 bathroom. Now she's proposing 14 and 16.
In order to separate the hallway, that has to be that way.
17 and 19 are no longer in the proposal.
Right.
Oh.
All right, so I'm a little confused here. Where is?
So which ones are in the proposal, Chris?
So if you look at the plan that's up.
Yep.
So that entire bottom half.
Yeah.
13, 15, and then that elbow.
Yeah.
That was the original proposal, and 19 was on the upper part of that elbow.
Right.
Now, those two in the elbow are, are off, and 14 and 16 on the other side of the hallway are in the proposal.
She did, she, I think the reason for that is that you wanted that interior corridor door.
Yeah.
And in order to locate it so that it made any sense, the apartments were shifted to be, to be on the opposite side of that door.
No, I understand that. So on the north side of this plan now, the way you have it, the ones facing the parking lot, are those now apartments now? Or that, that was a rental of an office?
That's apartment, facing the parking lot is 14 and 16.
Right, so those are gonna be apartments now? So your, your designer, the office that was there is no longer gonna be there?
Right.
What about the, the business tenant with the recording stuff? Where's he?
That's where he was.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I talked to him. He can move to 17. He, he only comes once a month for one hour. He, he is illegally blind.
What about, okay, so what about the, what about those old apartment that we approved last time?
That's 13.
That was for the super.
That's 13.
That's 13. Oh, I thought it was the other one.
Right now, I only apply three, is that-
So that's the one with all the multiple rooms and all the multiple little bathrooms and-
Yeah.
Which is being changed per this plan.
Right. Although, okay. So here's the inside of 15. So 15 has two bathrooms and two bedrooms?
And there's no requirement for second floor bathroom? Is there any requirement, I'm not sure, that they have to have access to the elevator?
Yes, the door has a push button, like an emergency door. You know, push button, so only go emergency. Otherwise, it's locked, so you push out to go to elevator. In, in the elevator, there's a sign there from 35 years ago, say handicap only. I didn't do this 35 years.
What's the, like, the requirement for elevators for handicap access? Evan?
I don't know. I mean, all, all of that, we normally rely on the Building Commissioner
Yeah.
to ensure compliance with the Building Code and ADA.
And the Fire Department.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. Regardless of what you, what you do, if you approve something and the plan, floor plans are deemed
Okay.
and are not compliant, it will be, it will be addressed and resolved.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, we should, really should not worry too, too much about what's inside these.
Right.
No, I agree, but you, again, you have mixed use on the same floor, using the same elevator. So just like, that's all, that's all I was asking. The way that door is set up. The, it's, it's away from the elevator, so someone would have to leave the apartment, come into the public corridor to use the elevator. Yeah, if they were, if they were to use it. Is there a requirement that they have elevator access? I don't know that there is. Usually on the second floor for a rental unit, I would assume it is.
For new construction?
Yeah.
40B multifamily, you can have a three, a three-floor building without an elevator.
Yeah, there's no requirement here.
Okay.
And if there is, the building inspector will take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And they don't need additional sewer capacity for four new apartment units, correct? Is that what they're saying? Seems surprising to me.
I think that's what the DPW letter says.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't think we were doing this tonight, so I'm just looking at it.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
They have a letter back in June or something from the DPW.
Right.
October 7th is their most recent letter.
Yeah, he already calculated everything else.
All right, shall we read the letters? I guess, wait, first, does anyone else have any more questions for Nancy?
Is building, is unit 21 included in this?
No.
No.
But we have, I'm just looking through the letters that are attached.
What's that?
I was just looking through the letters, it's, that citations, that there was unit 14 and 21 were illegally occupied.
Illegally occupied?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I wanted to interrupt you. It's distressing to me personally as a board member that this applicant came to this board two times, and then low and behold, the, the Police and Fire Department and Building Inspector had to go out there on September 25th and found two illegal apartments. So I'm having a credibility problem believing any of this information about these apartments, our proposed apartments.
There's no illegal apartment there. He's talking about the 14 that the musician has. He, he had a futon there. And they think-
A what?
Futon, you know, the futon.
Yeah, mattress, a futon, yeah.
Futon there. And they think they, he lived there. I told him, I told the Building Inspector, I said, "He only comes one hour per month to drop the rain check." And because I'm, I co-managed the building, I know exactly when he used the futon, which was one and a half years ago. The reason I knew is they, he had a potential partner meeting that night and it go after midnight, so he, he didn't want to go home to, to wake the whole, his parents up, his sibling up. So he stayed overnight. And he's legally blind. He cannot drive.
Yeah.
I keep on telling them. They won't listen to me.
Where is the, where's the letter about the illegal?
Yeah, there.
Yeah, just there.
There, the Building Inspector comment.
Building Inspector comments.
But, you know, as sympathetic as I am to John's position, we really ought to keep our eyes on what we're approving.
as sympathetic as I am to John's position, we really ought to keep our eyes on what we're approving and not get too far afield.
Except we're not really sure what we're approving because.
Well, it's looking better. At least we have a drawing that makes some sense.
Accurate.
We have a drawing that makes some sense now, which we did not have. I mean, is there a feature that you would like to see on the drawing that is not currently there?
Full narrative on code analysis, energy code, stretch code, specialized option code are required. Do we have that?
When I do apply building permit, I have to address that. If I do any remodeling, yes.
As part of a building permit, that's usually required.
Yeah. Your application to the planning board proposed three, proposing three extra apartments should not be considered until you or your representative provide clarification on the concerns voiced. So the concerns voiced are a complaint about two extra illegal apartments other than the apartments approved by the town. There was discovered what appears to be apartments contrary to the town zoning bylaws and building code. Unit 14 and 21 were illegally occupied as apartments in violation of the zoning bylaws and building code. The revised plans submitted on September 24th are not acceptable for review due to insufficient information. Please clarify why unit 21 is not depicted, also a full narrative. So I would say, I personally would need a clean letter from the building commissioner. I mean, is that out of line on our part? He's specifically saying that he doesn't think we should accept this application unless these issues are addressed.
Anyway, my attorneys involve of that because.
I'm sorry, I have a question for Evan at the moment.
I'm just looking at Jose's letter. He's referring to plans dated, submitted September 24th.
Is that this one?
Is there a subsequent one that we're looking at?
I'm looking at the, I see the narrative that was submitted, September 24th. And let's just see what the plan. September 24th, so he is referencing the new, the most recent plan.
So I think we need, you need to go with the building inspector and address his issues before we can vote on this.
Already did. He reinspected the whole, unit 14 and 21.
Did you come across this email that's up here from Jose, October 9th?
Oh, no, I have October 1st.
Okay, so on October 9th, Jose sent an email saying that they did a second inspection on October 9th and verified that the prior violations that you just referenced are now cleared, and there's no sleeping units.
But then he also says, Evan, can you please clarify if unit 13 and 15, shall the passage door between the units be?
Yeah, so the most recent revised plans did away with the prior, the physical conditions that Jose and the fire department saw during their inspection. What Nancy's proposing per the plans that we looked at, remove a lot of that. So again, there's some, so Jose and fire are referencing physically what they saw and some violations, but what Nancy's proposing doesn't, it removes some of those passage doors between units.
Well, I'm going to insist that that has to get cleaned up. I'm sorry.
Most definitely, after all, we've been through.
There's still confusion about unit 13, 15, shall be a single joint unit connecting through?
Just sit down with Jose with your revised floor plan, stand by your engineer, and walk him through that there's four separate independent units, they're not physically connected.
Saw that.
I know, but the board wants a letter from him acknowledging that it's compliant with the building code.
I'm now in a hurry, that's fine.
Evan, where are we with the extension and the number of days is under review?
Yeah, I guess right here.
She already gave us an extension till the 13th.
No, this is the time to act, just give me a moment here.
You need to act now. This is the meeting instead of the 13th. So.
It should be here.
To the 13th.
But we took up the item tonight instead of the 13th.
So now this defaults to?
So we're just clarifying where she, because otherwise this goes, she can get approval.
Yeah, we have to be very careful of that time.
I can have her sign another time, an extension of a time to act right now if we're all mutually agreeing to continue.
I think I would like to continue, I mean, he's sent us a letter saying X, Y, and Z needs to be clarified, and I feel that it hasn't been adequately clarified. So I would like to have another extension till the 13th that you need to agree to, and then we'll take it up. And I think that assuming that those issues are clarified and cleared by Jose, then we're.
Even after the re-inspection on the, what, October, which day?
October 9th.
9th? He, then he sent a letter on October 9th, you want him to do it again?
It was an email not to us. It was a, this was the letter to us, and then there was an email not to us.
Yeah, he sent an email to Brian Sullivan and Evan, and then copied the fire chief and the fire captain. And that's all it says.
Yeah, it's still making inquiries about issues that need to be addressed. I mean, I don't know if the point could be made that those aren't in our purview and we should.
All I want to know is, know exactly planning board wants. And I will talk to Jose to make sure he gonna do whatever you want, because I thought he came back, re-inspected and everything cleared, but if it's not clear to you, I'll make sure he does again.
So we're going to do two actions. They're going to do a motion to continue to November 13th. And simultaneously, Nancy, I'm going to ask you to sign an extension of time to act to November 29th.
And just make sure, I understand Jose understand what exactly planning board wants.
Yeah, I can sit down with you and Jose.
Okay.
Okay, I will move that we continue.
Till the 13th.
To the 13th.
I have a second. Second by Anita, on favor.
Hi.
Hi. Chris?
No.
Chris is a no.
So what's today's?
October 20th, alright.
20th. Okay, so next meeting will be November 13.
Right, between now and then, you and I will sit down with Jose.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, bye.
Thanks.
Okay. We have holiday schedules, so we're going to have a meeting November 13th, we're going to have a meeting December 11th. We're not going to have one the night before Thanksgiving. So the question is, shall we add, do we need an additional meeting either November 20th or December 18th?
As I mentioned, I do have one applicant who's trying to get on as soon as possible.
What else do we have on the 13th besides Nancy?
Paulette may come back.
Paulette, and also the independents?
Correct.
I feel like Nancy and independents shouldn't be lengthy.
No, assuming we get the documents right.
So I think we could maybe manage one more thing. Is the new thing going to be in-depth and lengthy?
The new thing, I don't think we can get it on the 13th due to advertising requirements.
So then let's do it.
What is it?
Progress Ave, in addition to an existing industrial building on Progress Ave. It was either advertising or the project ended in a conflict.
Is this a major site or a minor site?
No, it's minor.
Okay.
He may have had a conflict, so he was asking, when Becky mentioned that the board may consider the 20th, he is available on 20th.
Well, maybe we could do the 20th, only that and the Bayard.
And then do Bayard, yeah.
What do people think about that? I mean, and I would say do Bayard as a roll-up-your-sleeves work session at 6:30 and do the other at not till 8:00 or even 8:15.
Why don't we do the hearing first?
First, yeah.
Okay, we do the hearing first, good idea.
And then get that out of the way and then.
And then close the hearing and go into a work session.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a meeting now on the 20th.
No meeting on December 18th.
No meeting on December 18th. Is that okay with people?
Yep.
And you think we'll get through all our work that way? Evan?
I think so. On the 13th, if the board is interested, I can have someone from the state flood plan program provide an overview of the required zoning amendments to the flood plan bylaw.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
That is something that we'll need to advance for spring town meeting.
Okay. Next up, we have liaison updates. The housing advisory board didn't meet. Anyone have any updates, Chris? You're muted.
Thank you. I was not able to attend the CONCOM meeting yesterday.
Okay. Joel, you did not?
It was pretty full, I walked by there.
I gave the planning board update, and then I left.
What was the big issue? Because I noticed they had, the room seemed to be pretty full.
I watched it, there were some people from Paulette who didn't know it was going to be continued.
Ah, okay.
They had a variety of other guests as well.
Okay. Master Plan Implementation Committee. Oh, annual goals and objectives, I thought we were taking that off.
Okay, I can take that off. The Master Plan Implementation Committee is a subcommittee of the Planning Board. You appointed this committee. The town clerk has reminded us that all of these appointments have expired and need to be reappointed.
So that is?
Me.
You.
That's everybody on the committee. Fred Brusseau, James Derigay, Erin Drew, Scott Rumel, Peter Spawn, Brian Strip, Deb Taverna, and Glenn Thorin has resigned from this committee. So I think a motion to appoint the full slate with the exception of Glenn Thorin through, and pick a date would suffice.
About a year from now.
Yeah, I would recommend it, it's a pretty good team.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to reappoint.
All those good folk.
Yeah, all those good folk, sure.
Yeah, the existing committee with the exception.
The existing committee with the exception of Glenn Thorin.
To October 31st, to 2025.
Perfect, okay. What'd he say?
Turn into a pumpkin.
Pumpkin.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mike Walsh, motion by Anita, on favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Alright. Input to the Outdoor Space and Recreation Committee. Brian Scrip wanted us to weigh in on the ways in which we interact with the Outdoor Space and Recreation Committee.
Just open space and recreation in general.
And the concept in general.
I'm not sure that we have a huge interface with them.
Well, I mean, there have been projects before us where they.
Where open space is discussed.
Have made a donation of pocket parks or.
So what is the ask here? Is the ask?
He just wanted us to kind of talk about, think about what impact our work has on open space issues and if.
I'll give you an idea. What I did for AGCOM is basically send them two short paragraphs saying, this is what we do and these are the other town groups that we interact with when we're doing it. And that seemed to satisfy them. I copied you on it, if that was adequate.
I mean, we we have, you know, in a general way, made lip service more than anything else, I would say, to the idea, especially in the 129, as projects come before us in the future, I hope we'll embark on that process more. Anyone else? I know, Chris, you had some thoughts about it?
Well, we definitely included it in our, in the MBTA zoning bylaw. So we've been trying to include it where we can. The challenge is that a lot of our zoning does not necessarily require a significant amount of open space. It prioritizes other things over open space.
But admittedly, we have a lot of places where we have considerable latitude on the special permits, where we certainly can stick stuff in, and we do to some degree.
We should probably do more.
Yeah, we should, but I mean, there are only 365 days a year.
I wasn't sure if he was, like, asking us to do more, or if there was like an ask.
He just wanted a short statement.
I think.
Okay, I wasn't sure what the ask was.
Alright, so I'll read a couple paragraphs and I'll send it, I guess, around. See if people are okay with it.
Yeah.
Including the MBTA and the overlays where we have special permit ability. We're trying to integrate it, and we hope to continue to do more so in the future. Alright, so now we have to assign planning board liaisons to replace Paul, who looks like was on quite a few committees, I didn't realize.
I'm on the MCAG one, so he wasn't on that.
Okay.
The liaison for that.
I think the town has two delegates for NIMCOG.
Oh. The town has two, or the planning board has two? So I think Pat goes to it.
Yeah, Pat's on there.
So.
It's me and Pat.
Was Paul, like, were you guys sharing it? Is that what, are you the official designate?
He did the previous year.
Okay, alright, then my mistake. Okay?
Okay, Center Village Master Plan Committee. I would be interested in that, except my husband's the chair, so I don't necessarily think that's ideal.
It would be ideal if you weren't conflicted. That's one of the challenges with Mike being a chair, is that on some of the topics that the committee wants to discuss, he is, has a legal conflict.
Because we're abudders.
Exactly, yes.
So that's not going to be, that's not going to work. You won't be able to get a quorum for decisions.
Does this person have to actually be a planning board member to be a liaison?
I don't know, we talked about that question because Paul actually is interested in continuing in that, on that committee, but I don't know if we are able to appoint him as our liaison.
No, if that, if you're, in that, within that context, I would suggest you just table that appointment if you think that between November 18th, joint meeting with the SLUT board, and then the second step being to backfill the associate position, that the new associate member.
Might be interested?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Alright, so you want to table that one?
And then Open Space Recreation Plan Committee? I didn't realize he was on that either.
How often do they meet?
They've been meeting monthly, and they're turning the corner, I think, within the next month to review the first draft. So that process is closer to being done at this point.
Okay, because I was saying, if we're in a jam, I mean, I know most of the stuff they're working on, so I'd be willing to take it.
Okay.
I mean, that's going to be Coolas Farm stuff and a bunch of other stuff, that kind of thing.
Common themes.
Common themes.
Okay. So I guess we've done all of those that we need to do at the moment, and then so finally the minutes. People have a chance to review the minutes? Does anyone have any corrections?
Yeah, there was two corrections I saw. One on October 9th. Just Nibi's name was incorrectly spelled.
How was Nibi's name spelled? N-I-B-B-Y?
N-I-B-I.
Oh, okay. How is Nibi doing? Any reports?
She was on Facebook tonight.
I was, but she did. I was, but she didn't visit the CONCON meeting.
And on September 11th, I'll just send this to Becky. It's just a, it's just a typo under 191 Chumsford Street, Casey Ferreira's name. It's just, that's all.
Oh, okay.
And then the other correction that I saw on September 25th, related to the Dover amendment, little bit more significant correction. So town council, when referring to the Dover amendment, the text says only mandates non-project. But I went back to the video, and he actually says the Dover amendment only applies to nonprofit distinction to educational facilities, and does not make that distinction for childcare.
Which was relatively critical in our decision.
Yeah, that was.
Yep, that's why I wanted to correct that.
Good call.
So should we wait to approve that one?
Well, I, I think we can make the change if we just approve with, with the change.
How about we?
Wait for that one. That one's kind of important.
Want to table it?
Yeah.
Especially with this thing on our desk right here. Yeah, we should need that.
Just thinking how many little paper airplanes you can make.
Okay, so then we'll move to approve, I'll take a motion to approve the September 11th.
I will move to approve the minutes of September 11th, 2024.
Start from?
Move by Mike Raesbeck, second by John, on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous. And also for the December, I'm sorry, I got, I got lost in my, October 9th. Take a motion?
I move that we approve it with the correction of Nibi's spelling.
Yep.
Take a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion by Chris, second by Anita, all favor unanimous. All right, so our next meeting is November 13th. And then we also have one-
November 20th.
No, 20th.
Evan, I can send Becky the correction for the 25th.
Thank you. And then you have the joint meeting with the SLUT board on November 18th.
Yep.
Yeah.
I will get clarification on whether that is just for the full member, or if it's the full member and the alternate.
Is the alternate-
Well, has the application been put up on the town website yet?
It was, it was two different things last time.
Yeah.
It was two separate.
Yeah.
It was two separate.
I know, but can they both be posted and done at the same meeting, or do they have to be done?
No, because the associate position is filled right now.
The only way that would work is, is if after this meeting you resigned.
You and I forgot that the associate-
Yeah, that would, that would do it.
We, we neglected to remember that the associate position is-
Is filled.
Is filled right now.
Currently filled.
Good guy.
It couldn't be unfilled unless-
Right.
Right. Minor detail.
So we'll have to do another meeting. We'll have to do another meeting for a joint session.
So it'll be two separate meetings.
I thought that was the case, but I couldn't remember why.
That's all right. They, they put it up front. It's quick.
Where that guy is over there.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll take a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Anita, on favor.
Aye.
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 Bye, Chris.